We will call to order the Oak Island Town Council Regular Meeting of May 13th, 2014. The council will enter into its invocation led by Mayor Lieutenant Jim Medlin, and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
Would you pray with us? Heavenly Father, thank you for this gorgeous day we've had today, and thank you for the way that you work in our midst already. Thank you for the blessing of living in this wonderful place and the blessing of serving you and serving our fellow man. We would ask you tonight that you'd guide us, that you'd give us wisdom, that we'd make good decisions based on what's best for the people of this island. We would ask you tonight, Lord, that you would be with all those who are in far and lans tonight, even in harm's way, protecting us so that we can have the freedom to do what we're doing right now. We're grateful and we thank you for that. We pray you'd bless them and protect them and guide them. We make our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking to see, I'm just surprised, already we've got council reports. Before we do that, I want to thank everybody that's here, that was here at our meeting this afternoon. You are stalwart souls. Council reports. Councilor Kaiser, please.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Scott, no report. Councilor Medlin.
Just to say that I appreciate all the people attending the meeting today at 2:00, and I felt like a lot of good information was put out there for us, and we learned a lot. I learned a lot, and just wanted to thank you for participating, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Medlin.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to speak on something that came out in the paper this last time. I'd like to actually commend our rec staff. It came out in the paper about rumors about staff members. I learned something very important. We have all staffs in services where I work at, and it happened to be this time, it's about HIPAA. And HIPAA, if you reveal any kind of information without the person's authority, you can be fined $1 million, plus the employee can be fined. So our staff did a great job by not telling anybody any information, and I'd like to say congratulations to the rec department for following the rules that are in place.
Thank you. And as always, I get to do the events Saturday, May 17th, this coming Saturday, at 8:00 a.m. at the rec center at the Kayak Lodge. We begin our Turtle Triathlon, the annual Turtle Triathlon, and then at 10:00 a.m. we have our annual First Crawl Festival, and that is, we always have great food and rides for the kids, displays there, and then the awards for the Turtle Triathlon will be given out about 11:00 a.m. or so. Sunday, May 18th, at the Ruth T. Bigum Senior Citizen Center here on Oak Island, they will have their 35th anniversary celebration from 2:00 to 5:00. They're going to have food and music, and they're going to have crafts and such for sale. So if you get a chance, run by there and see what our Senior Citizen Center does for us. On Friday, May the 23rd, we have a golf tournament at South Harbor Golf Course. So the Oak Island Par three at South Harbor has been undergoing spring maintenance, and the course is looking great. Coffee and donuts at 9:00 a.m., tee-off at 10:00 a.m., enjoy lunch afterwards at Bill Smith Park. For members, it's $5, and non-members it's $15, and there's for all levels of golfers, especially beginners, they are more than welcome. The Beach Preservation Society, I'm sure Roseanne will be giving us a review on their wine tasting this year, and as always, it was great. Had some, I found a new port that I really like. Standing room only, they had a great event again this year, and I'm sure it's going to have as much as we've always had in benefiting our Beach Preservation Society. Last night, I was a part of, for the third year, the Brunswick County Literacy Council's Adult Spelling Bee for the 25th year. Every year, they have teams, you have teams of two, and each team is sponsored by a business or someone, and it's $250 to sponsor a team. They had 19 teams, so that was 38 people engaged in this spelling bee. They also have silent auction, and all the proceeds go to our Brunswick County Literacy Council, which helps with the schools and the libraries, and also volunteer tutoring for kids to help them learn how to read. As I said, this is my third year in it. I went with Donna Atkins from BlackBerry Marine, second year she went with me. We were runner-ups, almost wanted. Yeah, runner-up. I misspelled plebiscite. Somebody spelled plebiscite. And that is my report. Next, we have presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, and if the council doesn't mind, we have some representatives from ADM. So I would like to, with council consensus, go ahead and do this resolution of appreciation. It's under New Business Number Two on page 70, and so they don't have to sit through our entire meeting. I'm looking for the, there we go. Trying to find the resolution in my packet here. Who do we have here this evening from ADM? Okay, if you don't mind, come up to the podium, because this is a very important resolution. And tell everybody your names.
Hi, I'm Nicole Harding.
This is a resolution of appreciation for a donation from Archer Daniels Midland, whereas the town locates, counts, and monitors sea turtle nests on the beach every year, helping scientists keep track of this endangered species, and whereas the town is fortunate to have staff and volunteers dedicated to this purpose, whereas town staff and volunteers need a way to travel on the beach from end to end on a daily basis once the turtles begin laying their nests, and whereas Archer Daniels Midland regularly participates in conservation efforts, and representatives from the company have served as nest parents in past years, and whereas this year ADM has increased its involvement in this important environmental program and donated $2,500 to the town in support of its efforts, and whereas the money will be used for renting a much-needed four-by-four utility vehicle to use for the town's sea turtle protection program, whereas the town appreciates support from businesses in the surrounding community, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Oak Island extends its appreciation to ADM for its generous support of protecting the endangered sea turtles. Be it further resolved that the town of Oak Island hopes this cooperative relationship will continue to benefit the town's sea turtle protection program adopted this the 13th day of May, 2014. Thank you. And then we have a proclamation in honor of the Oak Island Senior Citizen Center's Whereas on May 18th, 2014, the Oak Island Senior Citizen Center will celebrate its 35th anniversary of providing services to the town's senior citizens, and whereas in 1979, a small group of Oak Island artisans, also senior citizens, started what has grown into the Ruth T. Bigum Oak Island Senior Center. The first location was the old post office building on Beach Drive, and in 1980, the group moved to the old red and white shopping center. There was one more stop before landing in the current location on East Oak Island Drive, whereas the center is a place for seniors to gather, share meals, play games, and take classes. I don't read every single paragraph in this, whereas the center is fully funded by grants from Brunswick County, the town of Oak Island, and local utility companies, and proceeds from the craft shop, whereas more than 300 people are currently members of the Oak Island Senior Center. Now therefore, I, Betty W. Wallace, Mayor of the town of Oak Island, do hereby commend the Oak Island Senior Center on its 35th, 35th anniversary with sincere appreciation and the hope that it will continue to be an integral part of the community in providing support and services to seniors and others. Proclaim this the 13th day of May, 2014. Thank you, guys. And if any of you here are old enough to be a member of AARP, and you haven't gone to the Senior Citizen Center to become a member, stop by there. That is one of the best groups we have in this town. Next, we have a presentation of the 2014-15 budget review by our town manager, Steve Foster.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Let me see if I can get this off of running here. Our heating technician will lower the screen for me. Thank you, Kyle. Okay. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to present yet another budget. We've had a couple good ones over the last couple of years, and I think that this board has done an excellent job in keeping it under control, and I want to thank you as a resident and taxpayer for what you've done to keep it under control. As you know, this is, I also like to say, for some of you, this is going to be kind of a rehash, because I think some of you saw it at the last night's meeting, it's kind of, this is a little bit more, a little bit less expansive maybe, but anyway, I think it's good, just to get a good scope of what the budget's going to look like. Under North Carolina Budget and Fiscal Control Act, General Statute 159.8, it requires us to have a balanced budget every year. Unlike the federal government, state government and local government have to have all their funds balanced where the revenues and expenditures equal out. So that's what's mandated by the General Assembly. Another common misconception is the town can do pretty much whatever it wants to. Well, that's not true in North Carolina, as opposed to, say, South Carolina, Florida, and some other states. The General Assembly only grants out certain amounts of authority to local governments, which would include authorities, counties, cities, and towns, and cities, towns, counties, or cities, towns, and villages all share, even though it's a different name, they all share the same statutory authority, no matter what they're called. Also in this, the budget ordinance of a local unit of government covers fiscal year beginning July 1, ending June 30. So we have July 1 coming up, the General Assembly's in business right now, they're in the short session, trying to finish up their budget for the coming year, which is the primary purpose of the short session of the General Assembly. Some of the goals that I had in putting this budget together this year was to continue to improve the financial standing of the town, to continue to pursue cost savings throughout sources of services where possible, to endeavor to maintain current quality service levels at the least possible cost, maximize the efficiency and quality of service delivery, continue to improve financial reporting, maximize the use of current human resources, and reduce those resources where necessary, improve service responsiveness, and my main thing that I was looking for is trying to deliver a good quality service product. Some of the highlights in this year's budget is a 1.5 cent adwareum tax reduction, depending on if that's what the board would desire to do. Matter of fact, this is all subject to board approval, this is just my budget, and they have to approve everything in here. Reduction of total number of funds, and this year, we rolled in the fire and rescue consolidation or fund, and we consolidated that into the general fund, which cuts down on the total number, and I think Ms. Word felt like that was a good idea to do as well. We have funding for first responder emergency medical service training, reduction in current positions, total one full-time and one half-time positions. We're proposing the addition of three and a half positions. One would be a fire inspector for the fire department, developmental services code enforcement, building inspector, utilities, it would be for a maintenance position, half-time maintenance position, and originally, the utilities department had asked for two full-time positions, and we took those out because we were able to reorganize the department, and we felt like we could get by with just a half-time increase position. Continued increase in the beach fund balance that we started last year, funding in the Calph Reserve Fund for fire truck purchase, which was outlined in the CIP's committee file report the board's already adopted for $220,000, the purchase of three police vehicles. Incidentally, we haven't purchased any new police vehicles in the last three years. This is going to help with the tower financial software purchase and implementation. We're proposing a coal increase of 2% for employees and 1% merit, decrease costs in the employees' health insurance plan. We were very fortunate this year among some, one of the few municipalities that actually had a decrease in health insurance, based on pretty much the same plan, with the exception of drug benefit, and we were able to reduce that, depending on what the board wants to do, up to a minus 4.5%. That's a decrease. Projected sewer district fee for this coming year, and this is in accordance with our financial advisor and what we felt like that we needed to do to cover our bonds, is going up from $719.31 up from, or going to that, up from $643.68. Also included in this budget, if we remember, we borrowed a little money from the accommodations tax fund to meet our obligations this past year, so we're going to be putting in $300,000 toward the repayment of that loan. These are the funds that we currently have, and I'd like to say again, each one of these have to be balanced. The general fund, the water fund, wastewater fund, stormwater fund, solid waste fund, the South Harbor Golf Course Fund, sewer district fee fund, accommodations tax, the beach preservation fund as well. I know that we have a way back here, it takes a special interest in that, right, Roseanne? Okay, and that's the funds that we have, and each one of these have to be balanced. Here again, let's see, proposed adwareum, I think I've got that misspelled, I'm sorry. Maybe I didn't. Proposed adwareum property tax rate reduction of 1.5 cents for $0.27.5 to $0.26 per $100 valuation. The additional tax base is up from FY 1314, which is $2,453,169, $69,240, to fiscal year 1415, at $2,480,981,162. The tax levy for this year is expected to yield $6,450,551, that's with the reduced rate. Total reduction in the general fund from 1314 of $9,892,318 to proposed 1415 of $8,070,622. While that looks really, really good, I can't, we can't take credit, because this is an accounting issue when we roll the fire fund into it, but we'll take credit if you want to give us credit for reducing it by that much, which is good.
You have credit.
Property taxes. This gives you an idea of what percentage of your property taxes go into the general fund, which gets all the property tax revenue. Of the total general fund, which is $10,693,890, 57% of that is based, or is property taxes that we collect. 29% of that is local option sales tax, and then 14% of other revenue sources that we get from the state and fees and that sort of thing. This is the budget breakdown, I'm not going to get down the whole list, you can read them. Of course, the highest, the most expensive fund that we have is $13,320,155 for the wastewater fund, and I'll point out the general fund at $10,692,890, is a good bit less than what our wastewater fund is. So that's just to give you some comparison of what it takes to operate in the general fund, which most of our operations come out of. The total budget for this year is $31,879,125. This is a graphical, a graph showing the differences. It goes all the way from $13,321.55 all the way down to the Beach Preservation Society, which shouldn't be at the bottom of the list, but it should be, because it's the lowest amount that we have. But that gives you some idea of the difference in the funds. There's a lot of factors that go in that we have to consider for the upcoming fiscal year. One of those is the economy, another is the percent of revenue collection, inflation, availability of state shared revenues, state and federal mandates, and availability of grants. Inflation has taken, takes a pretty good whack out of our budget every year, and it's something that most people don't pay much attention to, but it's a cumulative problem. And if you look at this graph, back in 2009, it was .03%. 2008 was pretty close to it. Then you see, starting in 2010, it starts going up considerably to 2.63, and up and down till what we're projecting for this year is a 2% inflation rate. What effect does that have? Well, if you had 2% just based on the general fund, it would have a gross negative effect of a minus $213,857. And ladies and gentlemen, that does have an impact, this inflation that we have. The economic outlook for the state and for our area, North Carolina gained the second most, was the second most improved employment picture in the country behind Florida. Real estate prices are expected to rise 7.1% in the next five years, putting the Wilmington Metro, which we're in, on a list of 15 of the best housing markets. New single-family permits have significantly increased, and the number of total inspections, according to our building inspector, chief building inspector, are almost back, for the number of inspections back to pre-2008 levels. Increased interest in new development, projected development on Highway 211 is expected to increase and build out the tax base by $750 million, which reflects an almost, just in property taxes, almost $2 million, and that's at the proposed 26 cent rate. Percent of revenue collection, current tax, year tax collection rate is 94.4, which is not exactly stellar, and we'd be the first to admit that, but there are some reasons for that. Number of bankruptcies that we have are a good part of that. We have one taxpayer that owes $400,000, he's in bankruptcy, and we can't really do a whole lot with it until he comes out or the bankruptcy court does something about it. We have a high sewer district fee, only one of three in the state, which has an impact because of the amount of money it takes to pay the fee, pay the taxes, and it does have an impact on that. Human resources, up until the last couple of months, we really haven't had anybody really, I shouldn't say we haven't had, we've increased our efforts, were able to increase our efforts, by way of an extra employee that we have in administration, who went from half-time to full-time, and we expect that she's going to be working with Mr. Eads on some plans on some increased property tax collection that we can use. And the economy, well, it's, the economy's coming out of it, but it's still got a good bit to do with some of the previous amounts owed in taxes. So in addition to the new collection system that I just talked about, we have a continued strict water cutoff measure, where if you don't pay your bill, we're cutting your water off. And I hate, we hear some pretty sad tales doing that, but we just really don't have any other alternative but to do it. Increased accommodation tax enforcement, that employee's also looking for houses that are not listed as a rental house, they're not collecting revenues, they're looking for that currently, and I think she's doing a good job on trying to identify those. Debt service. We have our two basic service funds that we have outstanding debt in, one's the enterprise fund, the other's general governmental debt. The total remaining debt that we have in the enterprise fund is $162,246,794, plus, Richard, $49,080,70, which we owe the county for the wastewater, our portion of wastewater debt, which is county-issued debt. The fiscal year 1415 debt service payments on the utilities or on the enterprise fund are $10,745,531, pretty close to what we have in our total general fund, and this includes, also includes the county payment at $2,909,697. Under general governmental debt, this would include the town hall, the police department, the two fire stations, the pier, and all of those, which is $13,732,581. The debt service payments on that this year would be $1,761,759. So the total debt service payments for this year, upcoming year, were projected to be The total debt, both combined, everything, is $225,594,45. And I think the mayor's offered a rat check for that, right?
Oh, yeah. Do you take credit?
The town's total debt obligation was $186,257,988. At the beginning of fiscal year 1314, the anticipated total debt remaining at the beginning of this coming, upcoming year, however, has gone down to $175,979.
I think it's $175 million.
This is the town debt only, so these numbers do not include the town's portion of county finance debt, since no new debt has been issued since this board has been in place, and the cost reduction measures that this board has taken in place, the town's overall debt, outstanding debt, both principal and anticipated interest have been reduced by $10,278,613 this fiscal year. Included in this reduction was part of what the board chose to do last year, was paying down some debt, and that was in the amount of $183,226 for the following installment payments, and that's for a caterpillar meter grater, an E1 fire pumper truck, two ambulances, and one used fire truck. So in conclusion, the fiscal year 1415 budget recommended, or recommended budget reflects a budget that can continue to pursue cost savings, maintain and improve current quality service levels, improve the financial reporting system with implementation of new financial software and staff, improve service responsiveness, and provide a reduction to the taxpayers of Oak Island, in addition to meeting the town's debt service obligation. Mayor?
Any council members have any questions?
I would like to say that we're wanting to have another workshop. I'm thinking right now, at least, May 28th is what we're kind of looking at right now. So if you really want to get down to the details in that, we could, if you want to wait until then, I would encourage you, any of you have any line item issues or questions, to get with staff between now and then, and I think that'll help expedite either that or probably even better, email some of them, and we'll be glad to do whatever research on this that you'd like for us to do.
Would the council like to go ahead and make a motion that we schedule a budget workshop on May the 28th at 10:00 a.m.?
Madam Mayor?
Please.
I move that we schedule our next budget workshop for May 28th at 9:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Yes. Thank you. Have a second, please.
I think everybody's been checked off, I think it's.
Pardon?
I think everybody's said that they might be available.
Yeah, I think everybody looked at those dates. We had first mentioned 28th and 30th, and everybody's okay on the 28th. Second by Councilor Scott. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. And Steve, before you leave the podium, I'd like to make a note that that employee health package, even though we got probably a reduction in the rates, it includes a little over 3.5%. and a half percent of our total employee health costs to the federal government for the administration of the Affordable Care Act. So with that, if we hadn't had that, it'd be almost up to an eight percent reduction.
In addition to that, I think that our human resources officer said that it started out, we were afraid it was going to be a fifteen percent increase, but after we started making adjustments and, and she started working with BB and T and their insurance division, she was able to completely pare it down. Now, this minus four point five percent, there is a, it, there is a difference in name-brand drug prescriptions, so that's something that maybe the board might want to talk about to some degree as well, too.
And your other revenues under the general fund, some of those are restricted, Pell Bill funds, money we get from, for the police department, from statewide funds and so forth. So not all of that is just money you can spend where you want to.
No, ma'am, those are, those are restricted funds on those, that you have to spend. The good news is, the General Assembly was looking at doing away with all Pell Bill funds this year, but they decided not to. But that's not to say that in the future it might be, you know, in danger, so.
So we may lose our share of the highway tax for our Pell Bill funds?
They certainly looked at it seriously this year, so.
Everybody write your legislature, and let them know that we, we want to keep those shares of the highway tax, so that we can use it to resurface our roads and repair our roads. You see the work being done on Dolphin and Pelican right now, it's paid through by Pell Bill funds. And one other note, and I'll hush, I don't know if any of you have noted, some of you have, for the past several years and this upcoming fiscal year, our total debt service, what we write checks for, is an average of one million dollars per month. So that's, I think the manager and the staff, finance officer have done a fantastic job in cutting expenses where they could without reducing the services that everybody wants. Thank you for all the hard work on that.
That's a noisy screen.
Things got a bumble here, like a grocery cart that you have. Next is adjustments and approval of the agenda. I've already moved new business number two to the presentations and proclamations.
Madam Mayor, if we could just leave it there for a vote, still? Council didn't actually vote on the resolution yet. You read it, but we didn't have a vote on it yet.
Oh, okay. So even though I moved it, just leave it as new business number two for the vote. Okay. Forget what I just said. Any other council members have?
Madam Mayor?
Please.
I would like to add new business item number four. It is a, Todd Wrestler, who is representing the town's interests in a few matters, but one of them would be the Bald Head Island Terminal Groin, where Bald Head Island's trying to put in a terminal groin, and this is just setting forth conditions under which we would withdraw our objection to Bald Head Island's use of Jaybird Shoals as the sand borrow area. And basically, it just says, it says that we would go along with the towns of Castle Beach and also the Baptist Assembly to agree not to object to a one-time use of that Jaybird Shoals as a borrow area. And the conditions say it would be used, and, and the use of the sand would be for their installation of their terminal groin, assuming that gets past all the other steps it needs to go through to get passed. But also, that they would use the Jaybird Shoals as a borrow area, only if sufficient sand did not exist from other sources, and also if any erosion on Oak Island would occur over baseline conditions, and they would, Bald Head Island would agree to mitigate that erosion at their cost. So that's basically the conditions, and they're just asking for council to agree to the, these conditions for us to withdraw our objections. So I don't know how to put that in a nutshell, but.
Why don't you word it, Count?
What I wrote down was consideration of conditions under which Oak Island would withdraw its objections to Bald Head Island using Jaybird Shoals as a borrow area for one-time use for its terminal groin project.
Okay.
How she does that?
That's good. Okay. Any other adjustments or additions to the agenda? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Of a motion by Councilor Painter, second by Councilor Kaiser. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. Next, we have public comments. As always, I'd like to ask everyone to please, when you come to the podium, state your name and address. You will have three, excuse me, five minutes to speak. Your timing will begin after you have given your name and address. First to sign up is Helen Cashwell, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Helen Cashwell, thirty-four oh seven East Yacht. I would like to encourage the council tonight to weigh heavily the ordinance approvals on the ones that are in our packet tonight. These are the ones that you've seen, this is the third time around, I'm sure. However, I would ask you not to rush to judgment tonight, based on what you've certainly heard this afternoon about the sewer. Meanwhile, you also have on this meeting tonight about the Brown Good Ordinance, I would tell you this, I personally, as a citizen, am sick and tired of hearing new ordinances proposed and nothing done about them. We have ordinances for noise, we have party houses that they get called the police continually, and yet, nothing's happened. I want to know what it takes to get our police force to arrest the first person, take them to Bolivia, arrest them and make, say, hey, we mean what we say. At ten o'clock, the noise shuts down. We have walking on the dunes ordinance, excuse me, they play on these, on these dunes, and why do we not make an example? I tell you what, guys, it wouldn't take but two times for that to stop. We have a continual trash issue out on the West Beach, because the rental agencies absolutely refuse to do anything. If you call them about Polycarts everywhere, oh, well, so what? They don't care. I will tell you this, find them, they will care. The sewage, the sewage discussion this afternoon, I think, gave you a good insight of what it would cost us, if we have to lay new pipes, add vacuum pits, add buffer tanks, none of this, and, and pools, nobody's talked about swimming pools and what that does to us. However, while we're in this moratorium, I would certainly like for you to consider thinking about having development services in the planning department, whoever that might be, start looking very closely at those issues, set up fees, get them in line, say, if you're going to do this, this is what happens. If you have to lay a ten-foot pipe to accommodate four houses, that costs us. Why is the citizens going to have to bear that burden? If that ends up as being a result of overbuilding, not monitoring, not paying attention of it, why should we, as citizens, have to pay for it? This can become a very costly issue. One more thing, I heard Mayor Wallace talk about contacting your local legislator. I would also encourage you to do this, because right now in Raleigh, they have every intention in the world of getting rid of any kind of tree ordinance or vegetation ordinance. Now then, this is Oak Island, well, it could be desert sands, New Mexico, next week. I would certainly encourage you to get a hold of them and prevent this from happening. Charlotte, Charlotte has already gone on record, they've lost forty percent of their canopy. It used to be a beautiful city. That's just an example. Go over to Bridge to Holden Beach and take a look at what a bare beach looks like. I would certainly encourage you to counter, contact your legislators and any other citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Catt. Next is Leslie Spearman.
Leslie Spearman, one oh six Southeast Sixty-third Street. Mayor Wallace, members of Town Council, I'm here to ask you to continue to fund all current staff positions and programs at the Rec Center. I was very concerned when I read in the paper that you're considering cutting its staff again. I regularly attend the senior yoga class and know that these classes have been growing to almost maximum capacity and have participated in the well-attended senior aerobics classes. Doctors and instructors continually remind us of the importance of regular exercise and socialization for seniors, so I know how important it is to keep the mind and body active. The variety of the Rec Center's programs has enabled me and others to make new friends, develop new interests, learn about Oak Island, the first crawl, art classes, turtle talks, other special events, themed luncheons, shopping trips, et cetera. As a retired teacher, I also support the year-round and summer activities for our children. I've attended several of those as a volunteer and know how much the children learn from, benefit from, and enjoy those programs. Since seniors do make up a large part of our permanent, permanent population on Oak Island, I want to thank you for your past decision to fund the programs and special transportation for the seniors. However, the staff has already taken one blow and cannot continue to offer the variety of programs with more cuts. I urge you to fully fund our recreation department and its outstanding dedicated staff so that all generations can continue to receive its many benefits. Please don't make cuts that will impact the quality of life for both our residents and visitors. Our Rec Center is one of our gems of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. And I believe you'll find a lot of answers to a lot of questions at the budget workshop on rumors that we're cutting programs, we're not taking a hatchet to the programs. Next is Skip Cox.
Good evening, my name is Skip Cox. I live at one oh nine Twenty-Fifth Street Northwest, but I'm also the manager of the Oak Island Beach Ambassador Program. So I'm here tonight to give you an update on this program. We've only been in now for a few weeks, but I am really pleased with the program and how well it's progressing. I would, I would like to thank Roseanne Fortner, who has been very, very supportive of me as I have been very wet behind the ears. I've only been a resident, my wife and I, for a year here in Oak Island, so we were looking for ways to, to get involved in the town, volunteer where we can, and so I appreciate the opportunity that the town and the council have given me to be a part of this program. As I said, we, we started it three weeks ago, it was launch, launch weekend was Easter weekend, Saturday, April the nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We currently have fifteen volunteers that are trained. We've got another training session this Thursday at nine o'clock to eleven, first-floor conference room here in Town Hall. If any of you are interested in attending that session, please feel free to do so. Don't show too much interest, but, because you may become an ambassador yourself, so word of caution there. But we've got ten new people who have expressed interest to be trained, so if that goes well, if they pass the background check and the waivers, we'll have twenty-five volunteers, which will really be a good, good boost for us. Presently, we have patrol teams that are two-person teams, volunteers wear a vest, which we just got last week, identifying themselves as an Oak Island Beach Ambassador. I will not wear that yet. We have hats. I did my hair tonight, so I'm not going to mess up my hair with a hat, but it certainly works very good in the hot sun for two hours. The beach patrol areas that we have, what, what I decided to do with, with the help of, of others weighing in, we decided to break up the East Beach into four twenty-block segments. Twenty blocks is a little over a mile. Our patrol times are two hours, so between twenty blocks up, twenty blocks back, you're covering two miles in a two-hour stretch. It's not, not too difficult to do, gives you plenty of time to engage the visitors and the residents. So that's the way we set it up for the time being, primarily because we're limited in our volunteers. As we get more volunteers, what we will do is we're going to segment the West End as well. We currently have one particular volunteer who lives on the West, on the West End, so she really likes to patrol down there, so she, she is on her own and she can do that as she, as she wishes. Patrol days, we, we thought we would start with Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays. We want to catch all of the turnover of the rental homes and the rental properties. They have been very helpful with us as, as we put together a flyer for new ordinances and just reminding people of, of why the Beach Ambassadors are in that capacity. We have taken those to the various rental agencies, and they have put that flyer in their package, their key package, so the word's getting out. Patrol times, we have decided on four to six p.m. We figure that this is about the time where people have spent most of their day on the beach, they're looking to maybe pack up, go in, and get ready for dinner. The beach patrol vehicle that we have, the new Polaris, great little tool, it will get away from you if you let it. It is in limited use, myself and a couple of other people are the only qualified drivers for this vehicle, and I think it, it would be wise if, if we kept that qualified list of people to a bare minimum, just for safety purposes. This is a, it's a vehicle, and, and you need to be careful with it. I was out there the other day, close to high tide, I actually thought I was not near high tide, but as it turned out, for some reason, I was there, and I found myself weaving in and out of people, not good, turned around, went right back. So got to be careful with it, but, so we'll, we'll keep the number of people qualified at, at the bare minimum for that reason. General comments, I'm really, really pleased with, with the program from a couple of perspectives. Number one, the, the feedback from residents and visitors has been really, really good. They are so pleased to see people on the beach, helping them control their, their behavior on the beach, their safety on the beach. We, we've got five key things, as you know, that we must impress upon these people in a, in a very respectful and tactful manner. We, we've got dunes, the young lady talked about dunes, we, we see a lot of dune violations, so we've got to protect these dunes as they are our last defense from the ocean. Beach gear, that's the newest one, beach gear off the island at eight-thirty until six. This has been very well received, it really has. I've been really, really happy about that, because a lot of people know about it, a lot of people don't know about it. I'm surprised, yes, ma'am?
That's five minutes, but since he's talking about the, another three minutes.
Oh, it's already up?
Yeah, you hit five minutes, but this is.
I didn't see the red light flashing.
Information about the Beach Ambassador's Program.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to close here. But again, they've been very receptive of this new ordinance. I was a little concerned about it, but people understand it, the key is really making your residents and your visitors aware of these regulations and make sure they understand them. And, and once you can explain to them the, the issues with a canopy frame overnight, they say, oh, yeah, you know, I never thought about that. When you explain to them how their children clawing into the ten-foot-high dunes, you're talking about an avalanche waiting to happen, that child could be covered up in no time. So you make them understand what you're trying to do and why you're trying to make a point to them about infractions that you see, you just got to be very careful as to how you do that. The other perspective I'm happy about is that our volunteers are really very, very good at approaching people. You've got to be really careful about this, and, and we knew that from day one, and, and that's what we stress in our training. You can really, you know, we, we could have botched this whole thing very easily if we did not have the right approach. But from what I've seen so far, in the fifteen volunteers we've got, they, they've done a very good job, I get good reports back from them, and so I, I think it's going very well. We do have serious problems on the island, on, on the beach, I'm sorry, with big holes. I was out there Sunday afternoon, Mother's Day, and there was a hole that could hold probably five good-sized adults. This hole was a five-foot-deep, it was about eight feet in diameter, it was between Sixty-Fifth and Seventieth on the West End, near the point. It was, it was a crater, it was an absolute crater. People think, you know, okay, the tide's coming in, I don't have to worry about it. No, Roseanne has already told me, a hole is a hole is a hole. Don't, don't think that the tide's going to take care of it, these things have got to be filled, so that's an important thing, too. Litter, litter's always going to be a problem, we know that, but the volunteers pick up litter, and I was, the other day, I was picking up a piece of trash in this. litter, and I was, the other day, I was picking up a piece of trash, and this lady said, "I didn't do that, it's not mine." I said, "It doesn't matter if it's not yours. If you see it, maybe if you've got a bag, you could put it in." She said, "Here's a bag." So she gave me a bag to put the trash in. So, you know, it's all in teaching people. Unleashed dogs, not a, I haven't seen it as a real problem. We know at this time of year, 24/7, dogs leashed, so, but as long as they're, you know, it's not as big a problem as I expected it to be. Now, the season isn't totally upon us yet, so that could change. The last problem that is major is cigarette butts, real problem, we all know that. Now, we're discussing what we can do about that as beach ambassadors. One of the things that John Michaud showed me the other day, and he's got a box of these, it's just a tiny little plastic piece.
Take a look at that. Pass it on down if you would, please.
And it's just for holding cigarette butts. You know, it's a start, it's a start. The only thing I was thinking about is, would that then become litter on the beach? I don't know. If it does, it does, and we'll stop, we'll stop it. But cigarette butts are a big problem. We know that our community is favorable when it comes to smoking on the beach, we realize that. I would not want to change that, but I would certainly perhaps approach people who are smoking with this little device and say, "You might want to use this, and let's keep a smoking ban on the beach off the mind of the town, the town council." I don't know if that's the way you'd want me to approach that or not, we'll certainly discuss that, but I would like to get it in their minds that, you know, this is a problem, and you enjoy smoking on the beach, that's great, but if you abuse it, you know, we have to do something about it. Anyway, that's all I've got to say. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank all the volunteers.
That was a nice presentation. I wish I were doing that instead of this. My name is Betty Hopp. I live at 7916 East Drive Drive. And a 15-bedroom, 12-wash house permitted in a residential neighborhood already invaded by a 10-bedroom party house has divided this town further. It's those who live here against the developers. Shoddy methods, at the very least, brought us here. An unnumbered page in the Board of Adjustments March 3, 2014 Special Meeting shows Moffett Builders Incorporated as the authorized agent for the house. Mr. Moffett is Vice Chairman of our Planning Board. Another page shows Better Beach Rentals as the marketing agent. Why was Reece Simmons, who works for Better Beach Rentals, allowed to sit in judgment? Donna Coleman is our Kama Local Permit Officer. She mailed by certified mail a notice to Brett DuFritte per regulations. However, with learning that Mr. Manos should be notified, she said that she gave that notice to Mr. Moffett. I understand, Mr.-
I'm sorry, Betty, but you're, is this-
I'm quoting from that book.
I don't, pardon, I don't want to limit content, but-
That matter's been resolved in the courts, so this won't have any-
Pardon?
Everything, it sounds like everything you're referring to is already public record.
Mr. Manos, I understand, received the notice in February, begun his date to appeal. Why did she not follow the rule for the second neighbor? And then David Kelly, Public Utilities Director, told City Council recently that each lot in the Oak Island sewer system has either sewer space for 6.58 people per house on the beach or 2.18 people in the woods. A 15-bedroom house advertised to sleep 30 people would use sewer capacity for more than four lots. Minutes from the November 21st, 2013 Planning Board meeting shows that Mr. Kelly told the Planning Board of the problems the town had experienced during the summer of 2013. A few pits had overflowed, and there was backflow into properties. These minutes do not show whether the Planning Board knew of our sewer limitations per lot, but my common sense says they knew and know now. The end result of that report and the minutes show that Vice Chairman Moffett made a motion to leave everything as is until more information after the next summer, 2014. Mr. Skipper seconded the motion, and it passed unanimously. Also present at that November meeting were Josh Crook, Lisa Stites, Steve Foster, and Steve Edwards. And finally, Josh Crook, Planning, Zoning Coord, Enforcement and Inspections Coordinator, had to have known that a mega house of this, like this, would overpower the sewer system. What was he thinking? In his impassioned plea for guidance from the City Council in reference to how to proceed on the sizing of houses, he evidently did not remember that up to six-bedrooms houses can be built now. How many more mini hotels are being planned now? How much further will he help to divide this wonderful town? And one more question. When Mr. Crook wears his company logo shirts to work and his truck shows his company name, will people get better service through his town department if they hire his companies? With all that this town has been through, a grandiose town hall, empty second-floor police department, a pier we don't need, golf course, Yopon Fire Department, sewer system, each and every person connected to this town should be and must be squeaky clean. And no house on this island should be built bigger than the sewer capacity for that lot at build-out capacity. And measured by bathrooms and kitchens, as David Kelly requested, no 5,000-foot houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopp.
Next is Bill Frye. Bill Frye, please.
My name's Bill Frye, 3024 West Pelican. Just like to bring to your attention again the parking problems with these mega homes. We're experiencing them already, and we're not even in the season yet. If you go down to West Beach, last night, we had a party, approximately 100 individuals at two houses right at 33rd Street. Of course, we had a sewer problem with it earlier today. I support the moratorium for six-bedroom, and hopefully we'll hold to that, and that's all I really care to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frye.
Hello again, Jenny Campbell, 6602 Kingsland Drive. I just want to read for the people here a letter that I just sent to the town council, and it talks about the proposed ordinance. What I am a little bit afraid of, if even the things that you have to consider tonight might not go far enough to in controlling the sizes of homes to be built on Oak Island, particularly in the near future, since the trend seems to be to build very, very large homes and to build the largest homes possible. I'm not even going to go into the sewer considerations because I think they will be major if we don't control the building on Oak Island. Proposed ordinance revisions for vacation rentals. I'd like to propose several ordinance revisions which may preclude the construction of oversized mini hotels in the residential areas of Oak Island. Several different types of ordinances will be necessary to accomplish our purpose of retaining the quiet residential environment of Oak Island. They may include setbacks, polycarp minimums, lot coverage, potential occupancy, impervious limits, and so on. I believe it's been difficult to adopt specific restrictions because the consequences of such restrictions have not been shown and illustrated. Any limiting factors of the sewer system have not been addressed here. My recommendations include: Adopt a limit on the percent of lot coverage allowed for a house footprint to about 30% to 32% of the lot square footage. Examples of the effect of such a limit would have a maximum size of the footprint, as I showed into an appendix I attached, which I'm not going into, but it would result in a limit of a house between 3,600 and 4,100 square feet of two living levels for the typical 50 by 120-foot ocean foot lot. It would result in a limit of between 3,900 to 4,340 square feet in two living levels for the typical 60 by 114 interior lot. The house footprint coverage should be proportionate to the size of the lot, and the larger the lot, the smaller the percentage of coverage. Two, in the 41-foot and 35-foot height-limit areas, which is mostly the beach, limit the number of levels of the structure to three levels, including the ground level. That means you would only have two living levels. You'd have the ground level where the pilings are and two living levels. This will preclude the building of three living levels above the ground level, which is how the planned 15-bedroom house of approximately 6,600 square feet was allowed on a lot with less than 60 feet of coverage. And this is how all of the lots on the beach where you have eight and 10 bedrooms, they are starting to build another half-level of house. Increase the front and back setbacks to 30 feet each from 25 to 20 feet respectively. This would reduce the maximum house footprint on a 50 by 120-foot lot from about 25, 50 square feet or 2,040 square feet. This would allow a 4,000-square-foot house. Some would argue that even this is too much for a lot with a width of 50 feet. Another alternative is to increase the side setbacks to 10 feet each. Adopt elevation restrictions to prevent artificial lot elevation of new construction substantially above surrounding homes, destroying the integrity of the neighborhood, topography, and adjacent views, which may require large unsightly retaining walls. And we have what I lovingly call the barracks down in the west end where a house was built. The ground level was almost a story of all the houses around them. It has ruined the view and the environment of the neighborhood. I also want to support, which I forgot to mention in my letter, one parking space per bedroom, and I certainly, if you want to do it the easy way, you can just limit the building to six bedrooms. I'm hopeful that the town council will establish new ordinances necessary to preserve the integrity of the existing low-to-medium-density environment of Oak Island, which could so quickly be lost. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. We need to take a quick break, 10 or 15 minutes. We have three people still signed up. We'll get their comments when we come back from the break. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, but I'm sorry, guys, before I ask for the three people that haven't spoken, I forgot an event. The annual Oak Island Beautification Club's Home Tour is Sunday, May 18th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. The tickets are $10. You can get them at the Greenhouse on Southeast 56th, yes, Southeast 56th, and some local businesses. The proceeds support the Oak Island Beautification Club. They worked on our arboretum, they work on the island, that's the median island that's at Oak Island Drive and Country Club Drive. So let's all go out there. I've been at several of these home tours. The homes that are on the tour are stunning, just absolutely stunning. Next, Richard Bunce, please.
Richard Bunce, 125 Northeast 26th Street. The proposed Town of Oak Island fiscal year 2015 budget is for the third year in a row, $30 million-plus, including another 11.75% across-the-board water and wastewater monthly and annual fee increase. There is a proposed 1.5 cent property tax cut similar to this time last year that ultimately did not survive the budget process with similar budget pressures as this year. There are still no audit results for last year's budget, and what do we really know about the current-year budget, given our audit issues? The latest FFE also forecasts another 11.75% utility fee increase for the fiscal year 2016 budget. We still have no proposal for a new utility rate structure that addresses the many flaws in the current rate structure. Because we cannot produce reliable monthly per-customer water flow numbers, the most important metric in our $16 million utility enterprise, perhaps staff cannot determine the revenue generated by any rate structure, so it just sticks with the status quo. I was also disappointed that, again this year, the option to move all town employees and their families to the ACA marketplace was not even discussed. My premium in the marketplace after the tax credit this year is just $160 per month. Any effective Town of Oak Island vacation rental ordinance should regulate all possible issues with these property uses, including use limits like the Town Bed and Breakfast Home Ordinance, which has a limit of eight guests, customer connection flow rates per hour, if not minutes, buffer tank function, and what about duplexes? Can someone build a duplex with two six-bedroom, 5,000-square-foot units and, in essence, build a 12-bedroom, 10,000-square-foot home in any residential zone? On the leaf collection issue, the most cost-effective solution would be to lift the vegetation burn ban and allow residents to burn leaves and branches in the right of way. While it was predictable that a suction device would be a maintenance issue in a sand-rich environment, it should not lead to abandoning all modern tools and return to burly men tossing plastic bags filled with leaves into the back of a truck. Plastic bags that must eventually be emptied and disposed of at some point in the process are also an issue. Home Depot sells the Bagster Foldable Dumpster for $30. That is eight-foot by four-foot by two-and-a-half-foot that a resident could set up in the right of way for their leaves and could be emptied by the town using a truck with mechanical assistance, after which the resident would fold up and store it away, ready for use with the next batch of leaves. The town should be careful as it makes tree ownership more and more of a burden to not incentivize residents to remove trees. It was good to see at least some information from Blacken Beach and Air Vac on the wastewater system design specification and practical use limits of our customer wastewater connections, although much more is still needed. Council and staff must build on this information and produce ordinances to actually implement policies to regulate customer wastewater flow within the specified limits. The wastewater connection ordinances should include specific customer connection flow rates and indirect limits to produce the desired result to assure that all property owners will have access to the flow that they have paid for over the years. Also, a better understanding of the rules and perhaps functional limits for buffer tanks matching the customer flow rates just mentioned. It is property use and not just house size that is important. The current Town B&amp;B House Ordinance has a limit of eight guests and some similar numbers needed for vacation rentals. Finally, on the issue of town staff effectiveness and those of us who are critical taking their place. That is what the previous council and manager often said, and in hindsight, the statements of the critics turned out to be far more reliable than the town officials. It is not for citizens to take over some functionality, take over some responsibility for the town officials. It is not take responsibility for town services, but for the manager to place competent employees into those positions, and if the manager cannot, then for the council to place a competent manager into that manager's position, and if the council cannot, then for the voters to place a competent council into that council position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunce. Next is Bob Germain.
Bob Germain, 6610 Kingsland Drive. I'll try to keep this extremely simple. We should not reduce our tax rate by one and a half mils. This represents $15 cut on your tax if you have $100,000 valuation. If you were to take $100 and invest it for one year, you would earn one and a half cents. According to the property reevaluation of 2010, 2011, we have a total value of property of $2.352 billion. That's $100 million less than what Mr. Foster was talking about up here today. That would represent $352,800 at this mil rate. We have millions of dollars of debt, which includes the $3 million that was borrowed from the accommodations taxes. We should be paying this down and putting more money in reserve for unknown- We should be paying this down and putting more money in reserve for unknown problems in the future. So again, please vote against a tax reduction this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Germain. Next is Kelly Germain.
Kelly Germain, 6610 Kingsland Drive. This is about the larger homes. And in addition to the sewer issues we heard this afternoon, you all have heard a lot from the public before. And you listen to the citizens, and you listen to them very well. And those citizens were from all over the island, not just the West End, all over. And now I'm asking for you to remember, remember what they said. This is town council, please remember, planning board, remember, and town staff. If you happen to go in the direction of X number of bedrooms, certainly, hopefully, less than 10 proposed bedrooms, please do something about the pre-sewer situation that existed. That is, when we had septic, building plans were approved with additional rooms that did not qualify as a bedroom but later became bedrooms for rental purposes. One in mind is a house that was permitted for six, might even have been seven or eight bedrooms, but is now a rental that has 12 bedrooms, has been no additions to that house whatsoever. Also, please do something about realistic parking requirements. There should be a minimum of one car per bedroom, which would also mean any kind of trailer, golf cart, low-speed vehicle, or whatever. Plus, you also have to anticipate that a lot of these homes are built, are being used for special events. So you have additional, you need to have additional places for guests visiting to stay, to park their car. Which brings me to the last point, trash. Pictures worth a thousand words, they say. The larger rentals are used for special occasions, and with that come people, cars, and trash. The picture that we're sharing right now is from the wedding this last Saturday, May 10th, and the crews came in and took away the tents, the chairs, et cetera, on Sunday. This is what was left behind as of this morning. It's been there since Sunday. Do we want this kind of stench left? Chances are, most of it probably won't be picked up by Waste Industries. And you know where it's going to end up? It's going to end up in the Kingsland parking lot. It's going to end up in our precious wetlands, and it's going to end up on our beachfront. And by the way, that rental house didn't have any problems with sewer because they had two porta-potties out in front, which obviously was probably the gentleman's potty and not the ladies', I would hope. So please take these things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. That's all who have come and signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak, please? Please.
Ted Manis, 3022 West Beach Drive. You folks haven't seen a lot of me in the last month and a half. You saw a lot of me February and March. But I understand that on the agenda tonight is a motion regarding the fifteen-bed, excuse me, regarding the larger homes and a method by which to resolve this issue by limiting the six bedrooms and a 5,000-square-foot permitted right. I would just like to say I support, and this seems to me to be a fairly reasonable compromise, and particularly the aspect of allowing a special use permit for an additional number of bedrooms, should that become appropriate under the circumstances of special use permit. I just would encourage you to take some action tonight and would like this matter resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manis. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak, please? If not, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. We'll call to order our regular meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Second by Counsel Kaiser. He nodded his head. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. Next is committee appointments. We have a term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board ending March 2017. We have an application by Albert Kyle Wynott. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Wynott, please. And it is unanimous. Next, we have the Beach Preservation Trust Fund Advisory Board. Have an application from Job Bob Jakus. I don't, it's J.A.K.U.S. I guess that's how you pronounce it. Jakus, okay? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Jakus. And it is unanimous. Next, we have one for the Emergency Services Advisory Board, one term ending June 2016. We have an application by Archie Craver. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. And we have an application for a term on the ad hoc committee for the South Harbor Golf Course Ad hoc Committee, and this is for a non-South Harbor resident. We have an application from Art Seifer. To all those in favor of appointing Mr. Seifer, please. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Committee reports. Roseanne.
Roseanne Fortner, co-chair of the Beach Preservation Society. Well, if you've noticed, the beach is open for business. They're here. The Beach Preservation Society is very pleased to report some points of pride as we go into this new tourist season. We have indeed had a successful wine tasting fundraiser, replenishing the Beach Preservation Trust Fund coffers after a very busy year of supportive beach lovers' projects and the Beach Ambassadors program. We are proud of being able to recognize our Beach Preservationist of the Year, the town's own, John Michaud. I hope you have read the excellent article that Lee Hennant wrote in the Pilot about John's award, and we're extremely pleased to recognize him as the best that's happening in the town of Oak Island. And he is so supportive of the kinds of things we do in beach preservation and the Beach Ambassadors Program. Thanks, John. We are proud of the successful launch of the ambassadors, and we hope that you will greet them warmly and pitch in with your own reminders to people on the beach. It's everybody's responsibility to protect this great resource. We hope you'll consider applying to be one of these ambassadors. We thankfully, again, for his excellent article about the training program and invite anyone who wishes to come to that training program on Thursday morning. So we have a new board member. Thank you for that, counsel. And we're pleased to be back up to full steam on the membership. Mr. Jakus has already been active in working with our projects in the few months that he has been visiting with us as a volunteer delegate to the board. We have a very busy summer planned, and three of the dates that we have in mind are the third Tuesday of every month, June, July, and August. We've invited the aquarium to come over and present a family program at the Recreation Center at 2:00 p.m. The first one is June 17th. These will be advertised among the Recreation Center offerings in the paper, and we'll put some flyers around town. Everyone is invited to these events. They're very special. We will also be at First Crawl this weekend. We hope we'll see you there. And we'll be at the Farmer's Market periodically, as well as Beach Day on July 1st. It's going to be a busy summer. We look forward to meeting you at the things that we're doing and invite you to come along with us and join us as we do those. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. And a round of applause for John Michaud, again. Any other committee reports?
We've been asked not to report, so I'm not going to report, but I'd like to know when we, when the capital improvement committee will be reporting.
I think we had said we have a budget workshop May 28th and then our June regular meeting.
You didn't say anything directly to us.
Pardon?
It was not sent directly to us.
I emailed the...
It was a response to someone else's email.
I emailed somebody that we would be having a budget workshop on the 28th and the regular meeting in June. That's, that's the committee's choice. You let us know.
Okay, well, let me, let me just mention, a point of clarification, because the workshop that we had on the 29th with you, with you all, that was our draft capital improvement plan. And some of our members had to take off time anyway. You were the ones that requested to have that type of workshop, so there could be a question and answer. At that, which was, you had not done before, you approved the draft capital improvement plan. And historically, we have come in May with a much, much less detailed report and given it to the, for the May town council meeting. As it turns out, we do it at the council meeting because not only do we are we reporting to you, but we're reporting to the public through the taping, but also the public who are sitting here, which, I have to say, we're having a lot more participation coming to the town council meetings, which is wonderful. The suggestion of having a presentation of the budget workshop at 10:00 a.m. really doesn't satisfy our responsibility to present our capital improvement plan to the fellow citizens.
Okay. Well, then we can schedule it for the June regular meeting.
Okay. And, well, is there, all right, we'll discuss that.
Thank you. Next, we have administrative reports. Mr. Foster, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things I've got, is there, I guess a lot of people already know that we've started working on Dolphin Drive, currently under construction and should be completed by the end of this month. To clarify the work being done there, this is going to take a several layer leveling course due to severity of the dips that we have on that road. And so we're just now getting started. I had a couple of people call and say, hey, is that all you're going to do? Well, it's not. We're going to do, was it, two leveling layers, John? And then we're going to do an overlay on the entire road. And I believe that John's checking with the contractor to see if we can up a little bit the increase of that overlay, maybe a half or two inches. And I think it'll be nice and certainly be a huge improvement over what we have currently right now. Highland paving is doing that for us, and I think they're, they seem to be doing a pretty good job. I want to thank both DOT and Barn Hill Construction for the paving of Beach Drive. I'm amazed at what they've been able to do. It's made a huge difference in that road. And also the bike path, incidentally, which is going to be all completely redone as well, too, along with the paving. It's going to be from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. And I'd like to express my appreciation, both Barn Hill and DOT, because they've done something that I thought felt like it was going to probably take a month and a half. They got in there and they just about finished with it completely. And I think it looks a whole lot better than what it did. We're running about, I don't know, John's going to address this in just a little bit, but we're running about two weeks behind on our vegetation pickup. Part of it's due to the ice storms, two ice storms that we had back in February and March. Now, people are just now coming down and opening their houses up and cleaning up. So we're getting all that plus additional vegetation cleanup, springtime cleanup, and that's, that's going out there, and that's certainly put us behind. Reminder for everyone, please, 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 if you've got a green or orange sticker on your car, please don't use it to park in one of the Town Decal parking spaces. The board has passed, June or July passed, a new windshield sticker, a blue one, that you can obtain downstairs in our customer service office. And we very much appreciate everybody trying to get one if they want to use Town Decal parking areas. Now, you don't need to park in one of these Town Decal areas. As a matter of fact, we got 1,110 parking spaces. So if you've got any of those, you can park anywhere, anywhere you want to, but parked in those particular types with a decal labeling, you need to have these blue stickers. It's that time of the year again. We've got our County Hurricane Conference on May 29th. Mayor Wallace has agreed to go to that. We also have staff, the fire chief, the police chief, and others will be going along with us. And I think First Crawl's been mentioned. Farmer's Market's beginning Monday, May 19th, and the market will operate every Monday from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. until Labor Day. And lastly, just to report, the West End has been suffering some severe, awfully severe beach erosion. And we're looking, we're in conversation with a couple of agencies on what to do about it. And hopefully, maybe we can get some funding, maybe to assist in that problem that we have down on the Far West End. That's it.
And if you don't mind, I thought you mentioned this, I would like to thank Lisa Stites and the staff that helped her out in arranging everything for our volunteer appreciation dinner on May the 22nd. This year, they've planned games and almost a picnic-style atmosphere at Bill Smith Park. If you haven't received an invitation to the volunteer appreciation dinner and you do serve in a volunteer capacity with the town, please let Lisa know. We tried to make sure to get everyone's names so we could send out invitations. She's worked hard on this, so I appreciate all...
I've had lots of help, so...
Pardon?
I've had lots of help.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. We, they have worked hard on making this one a true fun-time games and dinner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Eads, please.
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I think I mentioned several months ago that the United States Supreme Court was taking up a case of Green V. Galloway dealing with prayers opening public meetings. And I believe you sent the email around of the opinion.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
The Supreme Court handed that decision down on May 5th, which basically says opening public meetings with prayers does not violate the United States Constitution. I just want to bring that to the councils and the publics.
The only restriction I noted in the whole thing was that it should be for guidance for the, their deliberations and what they were doing in their meeting. You can't apostatize or preach.
Right. It's not a blanket blessing, no pun intended, of prayers, but it, like, for instance, in your prayers, that you can't basically pray to exclude another religion-type thing. I've never heard that here ever, so I don't think that's ever going to be a problem here. But it settled an issue that was kind of going in different places and different circuits. So...
I'm glad that issue is settled.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Next, old business, consideration of the ordinance modifications for regulations of large structures. Josh and Steve, and is David here? Everybody that has suggestions or can answer questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Could I speak?
Please, I wish you would.
Since we've had this meeting today, we've learned a lot about vacuum stations and capacities and what size it should be and how many people per house. And we know this moratorium's coming close to an end. This is not a very easy subject. It's not going to take, it's going to be a little while to iron out exactly what we need to do on this island, our town. We've heard the people speak in this town, and I'd actually like to make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we follow the recommendation of the seven-bedroom, 5,000-square-foot, until staff can work with something and come back with us. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm saying this seven-bedroom, 5,000-square-foot because it has to be that, unless we have another public hearing. It can't be nothing different.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just to clarify, and Lisa, you might, as town clerk, chime in here, you're referring to the proposed ordinance that you proposed...
Yes, yes, sir. That's what I'm...
And in my recollection, is we tabled that until this meeting.
Yes.
Right, right.
And, and we can't do anything more restrictive than what was advertised for that public hearing.
Correct.
Lisa, that public hearing was advertised for, was it, seven bedrooms?
Seven bedrooms, 5,000 square feet, with one parking space required per bedroom.
So to act on that ordinance tonight, absent another public hearing, which requires...
More time.
More time. That's the most this council could pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Counsel Weincoff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Scott. Discussion, please.
Did we not extend the moratorium in our last meeting?
We did.
Until the June, the end of June of 29th?
I don't recall the sunset provision on it.
It was June 16th.
But if I may, Madam Mayor, since our last meeting, I have had the opportunity to speak at length with Professor David Owens at the School of Government and in the Packet or some of his other, we discussed it, I don't want to put it on him that he suggested it, but we bounced ideas back and forth. And I believe... And I believe, what I'm prepared to recommend would be whatever the number of bedrooms, whether it be six or seven, if you act tonight, it can be, it has to be seven. But above and beyond that and the square footage, we go by way of a special use permit and then set objective and subjective criteria for those homes larger than that. And from my conversations with Professor Owens, he feels that it's very legally defensible and appropriate for this type of situation. It is a very delicate situation to deal with and balance everyone's interests. And the special use vehicle will allow the council to look at it on a case-by-case basis to see, number one, if it meets the criteria that you set. And the subjective criteria will be that it's in harmony with the surrounding area or surrounding neighborhood. And that would be on a case-by-case basis. And it sounds to me like the dozen or so homes that would fall into this category, I mean, that's been over how many years? So I don't think it'll be overbearing on the council to hear that on a case-by-case basis. So if you were to enact the ordinance tonight proposed by Councilmember Wyankoff, my suggestion going forward would be to direct the planning board to consider the special use process for homes larger than the seven bedrooms or 5,000 square feet and set the criteria. And then they make a recommendation on that, and then we come back, have a public hearing. And you, at that point, you can enact it or not, or tweak it, or whatever you want to do.
And this would resolve the issue of, I mean, the moratorium is extended until June 21st to 29th, but if they acted on this tonight, we wouldn't have to be concerned...
Right.
...with the moratorium.
Correct. And we would still go forward. At this point, no homes with more than seven bedrooms would be allowed, period. But the thought would be you go forward with the planning board's recommendation and then the council's consideration to have a special use vehicle to deal with those and take them basically on a case-by-case basis.
That needs to maybe make part of the motion then, does it not?
No. The motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to pass that ordinance that was proposed and advertised, and the public hearing was heard. After that, we would ask, I would ask that the council direct staff to send to the planning board the special use side of this equation to then bring back their recommendations to council.
And that would give us breathing room.
And call for a public hearing. I don't know how that's going to work schedule-wise. I don't know when the planning board's next meeting is. Josh, when the...
Planning board's next meeting is the 22nd, and it has a very stacked agenda, so it would more than likely be June.
Or you could direct them to have another special meeting, which you may want to, and try to get some finality on this. And however the advertising time requirements work out, act on it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
But on the table right now is just Councilmembers Wyankoff's motion to enact that ordinance.
And as I said, that, that takes that pressure off of, you know, this moratorium's while we can look at the larger homes. Any discussion, discussion with council?
Comment, Madam Mayor?
Please.
There has been some discussion about conflict of interest on my part because of a business relationship with a member of the planning board. I have discussed this with an attorney, not only my private attorney, but attorney from the School of Government. And they have both looked at the situation thoroughly and said there is no conflict of interest. So I will be voting on this matter.
Thank you.
I just want to understand that, so we would, that we would in fact be enacting an ordinance if we vote in favor of this. And what you were suggesting was that we would set tonight also direct the planning board to come back with criteria, or do we need to specify specific criteria such as setbacks, any thing like that, that lighting, ordinance, I mean, lighting, just those other things that have been brought forth as potential things that we should regulate in ordinances?
You can suggest what you would want to see or leave it up to the planning board. At that point, if the council deliberates on that, I'd like to make a few suggestions for you to bring the planning board. And that would be by way of, this is what the council's thinking, and then let planning board, you know, do what they're going to with it and come back with us ultimately, the decisions, the councils anyway. And, you know, but to get their, I think to get the benefit of their input, they need to kind of know what you're think, what the council's thinking already. Otherwise, you know, they may come out of left field, as you see it, or vice versa. So I would suggest you make a suggestion to them. This is the type of things we're looking for.
See, I'm, oh, here, here's where, are you there, Caroline? I didn't mean to...
Yes.
Here's where I am. I'm wondering after, after hearing what was said tonight about the sewer system and talking with David Kelly, if we aren't missing it by making the restrictions on the number of plumbing fixtures in the house rather than number of bedrooms. Because you, you can take a six-bedroom house and put 25 sleeping bags in the rest of the house. So I don't see where you're accomplishing anything with number of bedrooms. But you can accomplish something with the number of plumbing fixtures.
But we can't adjust what, sorry, on the floor that was brought up without another public hearing?
Well, rather than make a mistake, I'd rather wait for another public hearing.
Well, if I may, Mr. Medlin, we have to start somewhere. And that's almost, that was kind of the theme of my discussion with the School of Government. I mean, where do you start? I think what we're proposing here tonight, particularly if the council's inclined to direct planning board to come back with a special use, that can be one of the objective conditions as part of the special use process. And ultimately, you can, once, once that's looked at by staff and planning board and hashed out, then you can always rescind this ordinance and enact another one down the road when you have all those confrontations. But I think this would be a step to address the concerns that have been expressed by the public as well as the concerns we heard this afternoon. It is not a cure-all by any means. I'm not suggesting that, but I think it's a step in the right direction. Because certainly, if, if, if the moratorium expires or is attacked or whatever, and you find yourself with nothing, then you may be looking at another 10, 12, 15, 20-bedroom home application that you have to process. And if they meet the criteria, you have to approve it. So I think this is a step in the right direction. It is not a cure-all. We still have some work to do, but it certainly gets us further to the objective, as I understand what this council wants to do.
I understand what you're saying, but I still think it's a stab in the dark. It's my personal opinion, but...
Well, I also just, I mean, I have concerns because I'm, I'm very concerned about the sewer system limitations. So, but, I mean, I'm listening to our attorney, and it sounds like it would behoove us to do something. And then if we need to adjust it, rescind it and, and put in a new one.
Especially, as he said, the, you know, the fixtures could be an objective criteria when we send these recommendations to the planning board.
If I could adjust it and made the criteria with the laboratories and stuff in there, I would have done it. I'd reduce the bedrooms. But I think the way we did it last meeting, it can be adjusted, so that's why...
I understand that. I understand that. It would require another public hearing.
Yeah.
And I've heard, I've heard concerns from staff and from the attorney. And I keep saying this, but that moratorium is hanging over our heads. And as he just said, if we send these recommendations to the planning board, if you don't make decisions before June 20th, you've got budget workshops and everything else and information we've got to get from development services and from the Public Utilities Department working in with all this. At least it would put a stop to 15...
Trying to convince me?
No, just to tell you my, my opinion is it would put a stop to these 15-bedroom mega homes and even 10-bedroom mega homes until we can figure out what we do about our sewer capacity. So, any further discussion, please? All those in favor, please? All those opposed? Motion carries four to one with Councilor Medlin dissenting. Thank you, Josh. And I guess now we, pardon?
I want him to stay there for a minute. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, in conjunction with that, I'm requesting that the council direct staff to bring some suggestions to planning board with respect to a special use permit regarding homes larger than eight bedrooms or larger than 5,000 square feet. And I would suggest the criteria, the objective criteria would be increased setbacks, more of a commercial parking-type situation. In other words, instead of three and four cars parked behind each other, they technically meet the parking requirements, more like a commercial business-type scenario where everyone has...
Eddie and parking.
We need, to address impervious service requirements. And I believe that, well, and you may want to have them look at the height requirement simply because the larger the home, the more bedrooms, the more fire protection implications it may have. On the objective side, and a last, based on our special meeting this afternoon, there should be some consideration and condition related to wastewater, along the lines of what Mr. Medlin was just saying. I believe what we've heard in here tonight, that there needs to be some sort of forward-looking condition that will make sure everyone can be accommodated as the island gets filled out. And then as a subjective condition, I would suggest that it, the, the special use permit could not be issued until there was a finding that that structure was in harmony with the surrounding area. And that would address things like noise, traffic congestion, debris, that type of thing. In other words, even though it might meet all the subjective, I mean, excuse me, the objective criteria, if every single house around it's 1,500 square feet, a 10,000-square-foot home's not in harmony with that area. So that gives you that extra layer of protection as well. And if the council would direct staff to bring that to planning board, for planning board to then bring their recommendations back to council, and then we can call for a public hearing, that would, that would be sufficient.
Did you get all that for council to direct staff?
Yes, ma'am.
And along with that, if we have a motion to direct staff to do that, do we need to...
If we can call for a public hearing now, I just don't know with the planning board's schedule and ours, when the advertising requirements could be met and how all that will mesh up.
Right. I'd rather set that after we know when the planning board has discussed it.
Could we put that on the May 28th agenda in case we know at that time, have a better...
There you go.
Okay.
And if needed, at that time, ask them to hold a special meeting or not?
Right.
Okay. Chair will entertain...
Madam, may I speak with Josh for one? Well, Josh, their meeting is the 20, well, the public hearing, their meeting is...
The which one?
The planning board's next meeting.
May 22nd at 1:00.
And you think that their agenda's already pretty heavy?
Got a conditional use. We've got a rezoning. We're talking about height limits, and we're doing a few other minor things. So we've probably got a two- or three-hour meeting now. I can, I have to get it prepared. If there's going to be a public hearing, I don't think I'm going to meet the, I think that was their headline.
The public hearing I'm referring to is the one council has to have, not, not the planning board public hearing. And I don't think we have to have...
The planning board doesn't have to have one.
So perhaps at, at the planning board meeting, we can get their schedule to see... How about this? Could you also direct staff to direct planning board to have a special meeting as soon as they can after their May...
22nd.
22nd meeting, without giving a date? That way the direction's given, and if they all can meet the next day or two days later, then that can be accomplished.
You guys are having a meeting on the 28th, and there's six days in between?
Do it.
I can do it. I don't know that those members...
I think if you direct them to have a special meeting, as soon as their schedules allow, that's sufficient, Madam Mayor.
May I suggest that that special meeting be on the 28th? We could hold a budget workshop for two hours, a break for lunch, and then ask the planning board if they would agree to hold a special meeting at 1:00 PM, 1:30 PM on the 28th?
Well, yes, you can tell, basically tell us what you guys want. I mean...
Why don't we leave it up to the planning board? Just tell them we want them to have a special meeting, to work it in as soon as they can before our May 28th meeting, and let it go with that.
Okay.
Instead of combining, we're going to be here all day.
Not if Steve's got his budget together. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to direct staff according to what Mr. Eads just suggested, and we'll leave it up to the town clerk to make sure that the motion is worded in the...
I don't know that we need a motion if there's a consensus.
For my clarification.
I agree.
I'm doing the agenda this week for planning board. I'm to add on the agenda for planning board, for them to consider a date for a special meeting, to consider what you're directing me to do tonight, to do tonight. Okay?
Okay. All three of you say you agree. You two say you agree.
Thank you.
Okay. We got through that a lot quicker than I thought we would. We can go into the new business portion. First is, we're having too many of these lately. Consideration of a resolution in memorial of late Kevin Bell. I'm going to read this one word for word. Whereas the town council and citizens of the town of Oak Island are greatly saddened by the death of Kevin Bell, former council member and longtime business owner on April 6, 2014. And whereas Kevin Bell served his community for 12 years on the former town of Long Beach Town Council and the Oak Island Town Council, his last term on council spanned the consolidation of Yopon Beach and Long Beach into the town we know today. And whereas it is recorded in the minutes of a meeting October 1, 1998, that consolidation of the towns was something Kevin dreamed of doing and that he felt was helping to make history. He seconded the motion to consolidate on behalf of the town of Long Beach, was quoted saying, "Long live Oak Island," and is generally credited with suggesting the new town's name. And whereas his ties to the community extend much deeper than his service in town government, his business has been a fixture in the Oak Island community for decades. And whereas Kevin was also the driving force behind creating the Oak Island Skate Park, helping give the young people in town a place to spend time being active. And whereas throughout his years in Long Beach and Oak Island, Kevin Bell saw so many changes, and he takes with him a wealth of knowledge about the events and people that make up the town's history. And whereas he earned the respect, admiration, and high regard of all who had the pleasure of knowing him and working with him. And the town of Oak Island has sustained a great loss in his death. Now therefore be it resolved, on behalf of the Oak Island Town, on behalf of the town of Oak Island, its citizens and staff, the mayor and town council, by this resolution in public record, extend sincere regret to Kevin Bell's family members for their loss and the hope that his family would be consoled by the memories of his life and achievements. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official minutes of the town of Oak Island, and that an official copy of this expression of our deepest sympathy be presented to his family. Adopted this the 13th day of May, 2014. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Good move.
So moved by Council Medlin, second by Council Scott. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. And thank you, Lisa, for helping to draw up this resolution. Next is consideration of the resolution and appreciation of the ADM donation that I presented at the beginning of the meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
May.
He said so moved quicker. Second?
Second.
Second by Council Scott. All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. Now we have discussion of yard waste collection service.
There we go. Good evening. I wanted to take just a few minutes, about maybe five minutes, to go over some basic issues related to yard waste and our service that we provide currently. issues related to yard waste and our service that we provide currently. It's not really related, this issue that we're dealing with tonight, with the current situation that Mr. Foster talked about, but it is, in a way. We're dealing with a large volume of waste on the island. I'm sure all of you are aware of that. We're behind schedule, and I know it's created a lot of frustration for residents out there. We're catching up, we're working the next two or three weekends to do so. So we're trying to take care of that issue. But what I want to talk about basically is, right now, currently, we collect yard waste on a monthly schedule. We've had the same schedule and collection method, which is with the leaf vacuum truck and the grapple trucks for limbs, for about 15 years now. And we have a lot of the same original equipment. We are seeing escalating costs associated with this program due to the equipment repairs with our aging fleet, an increase in the number of homes served, and illegal dumping. So all those things combined have created a situation where we have continued escalating costs. Ideally, I would, it would be January, and if this is not because of Mr. Foster's lack of request for me to present this, this has been a long time coming, but it'd be January, we'd be talking about policy issues, what direction the council wants to take in terms of how to deliver this service. And then I would convert it to a capital outlay request through the CIP, or CIC program to get vetted out that way, and we would implement July 1st. But we're here and to talk about this issue, just from a policy and what the council, what direction the council wants to take long-term, because it is a very important issue and for cost containment and for providing appropriate and quality services for the residents. We have an ordinance, and most of you are familiar with, that deals with leaves and yard debris. And that ordinance really doesn't provide any guidelines. It just says, "We'll provide a service," and it points to other guidelines that the town may adopt. And we have other residential yard debris collection guidelines, and this is basically what it says, very limited to no guidelines. In other words, we say, no limbs greater than six inches in diameter, only normal yard maintenance, no debris from lot clearing or major landscaping, and no collection on vacant lots. And that's it. What we, what we don't have, and what we would need probably to add, and maybe we need to integrate these guidelines into the ordinance or not, that would be a decision a town attorney and the manager would make, but no debris from commercial landscape activities. And as opposed to saying, "No collection on vacant lots," it really should say, "No collection," or it could say, if this is the wishes of the council, "No collection in the right-of-way in front of vacant lots." This, obviously, we wouldn't go on as town employees onto a vacant lot and clear, but that's currently how it's worded, and that's the way I wanted to put it up there. There's no real limitations on volume. So what we end up with are some of the issues, as you'll see here, is lack of a monthly volume restriction, an aging fleet. And because of the aging fleet, we have, our operational cost for repair is getting to the point where it's more than what you would spend in debt service for new vehicles. And coupled with that, downtime to do repair work gets you further behind. And then we have, and obviously, like I said before, an increase in the number of homes served, and again, illegal dumping. So we have all those issues we're facing now. And here's an example of Southeast 20th Street. And if you go down there today, that's what you'll see at the end of the street. That's, don't know where it came from, but it's in front of three or four lots on the left. Leaves. And I put up here type and amount of vegetation. There was comments made earlier tonight, and I agree with those, and I've heard other comments from residents about this issue. Some of the other typical programs for vegetation removal in surrounding communities are carts for leaves or bagging leaves in biodegradable bags. Another restriction, no more than five feet long for limbs, no more than 50 pounds, bundled with twine or rope. That would, you know, we could do something like that, but it's very restrictive, a huge change in the way we deliver the program. And with all the vegetation we have on the island, which is a wonderful thing, it really is maybe not the appropriate level, but that's a council decision to make, for being able to maintain and keep clean the types of, the areas on these vacant lots or developed lots, I should say. Again, you can see here just the pure volume of leaves generated by oak trees, more debris in front of vacant lots. So the question is, what options do we have for council to consider? Option one is just continue the current program, which is really not sustainable, in my opinion. It just continues to escalate. We have the volume of yard debris that we're pulling off the island now, maybe 1,000 cubic yards a week, that we have to process and grind, and those costs continue to go up. So, but that is an option. The second option I listed here, and these aren't the only three options, but they're three of the primary options, maybe, is the current, is to deliver the service in the current way, using the current schedule, the current type of equipment, but implement some kind of restrictions on the amount of volume. And this is, this would not be very popular, the second bullet point under number two, but there's reasons for it. Prohibit collection in the right-of-way of vacant lots unless that lot is owned by the adjacent developed property owner. A lot of, obviously, a lot of residents prefer not to stage the debris in their own lawn, because it kills the grass, it's unsightly, it's in the way. And I understand that, and a lot, over the years, a lot of us have done that and continue to do it. By implementing a prohibition of this like this, what it does is it allows us to more easily enforce the illegal dumping and hold residents accountable. If we're able, with proper equipment, to keep up a regular schedule, not get behind, then, and so the owners, property owners can anticipate and know which week of the month we're going to provide that service in front of their house, this might be acceptable. But I understand the reasons why, obviously, why property owners don't do this. And then the third bullet point under option two is, is to upper code enforcement. And just like with some of these other regulations that we talked about tonight, with the beaches and stuff like that, go out and levy fines if need be. The third method would be a significant change for how we operate, but a typical one, Southport, Holden Beach, Ocean Isle Beach, biodegradable bags, a certain number, maybe five, filled with leaves. Limbs, like I said, bundled, or a cart used for vegetation. So it significantly reduces the volume that's allowed. And it also, and we learned this, we learned some good lessons, because Chris Napinski did a good job and put out a request for proposals to, and that's the other reason where we are where we are. We evaluated outsourcing this service. This third method was the method of choice for the private sector, and there's good reasons for that. They have found the efficiencies, and you can use a conventional garbage truck or packer truck. You can pick up yard, either the bag leaves and the limbs in the same vehicle, and just compact it as you go. So you make less trips. It's an efficient way of providing this service, but it is, it is a huge change. And up to the council to determine whether it'd be appropriate to make that change in how we deliver that service. In either case, in all three cases, you're looking at a capital outlay, I say not in all three, in the top two. If we stay in the game, it's a $300,000 ticket. It's $165,000 for a new leaf truck, a leaf truck that would have, and all of you have probably heard complaints and seen the operation of the leaf truck, where it discharges up into the air and covers everything with dust. The newer design's discharged down, so it's a lot better in that regard, but it's $165,000, $130,000 for a grapple truck. So you're looking at $295,000 or so to upgrade the fleet. I'm not saying, in my opinion, we have the trucks, they're, we have a 1998 leaf truck, which is, you know, the truck we first bought when we implemented this program, I'm sure, a 2004 leaf truck, a 1999 grapple truck, a 2000, and a 2006 grapple truck. They're getting old, and they require more service. So it doesn't have to be, and we're laying this out there to say, you know, we can limp along, we can make the equipment work, but we need to change. And if we change either the way we're delivering the surface, the service itself, and upgrade our fleet. And that would be, provide more reliability in the vehicles, less likelihood of providing the service, or more likelihood of being on time, and be more efficient, because we'd have less downtime, less repairs.
John?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
You are? I just wonder maybe if Chris could come up and talk a little bit about his experience with the private company that we got an RFP back on. I think it'd be good to hear from that, that part of the privatization part of it. Chris, would you mind coming up and maybe talking about what you've got for a proposal from private county? Maybe you and John both could maybe go over that.
Good evening.
Gentlemen.
I'm not as prepared as John was. As you saw, there was a lot of debris out there on the streets, and there is a lot to get caught up on. Private sector, one of the things we were looking at, we have an average billing of 8,400 water bills that go out. For each bill, we would probably charge somewhere in the neighborhood of $48 per year, less than a dollar a week, to have the service provided, and not just the service that we provide now, but to have that service increased to every week, which would eliminate how much is out there on the streets. You wouldn't have the larger piles, as you do, trying to pick up once a month. One of the other things with the private sector is, they will not supply a cart, a polycart. They will offer the purchase to a resident of a polycart for somewhere between $75 and $80. If they damage the cart, they will replace it. In addition to the polycart, they will also let you put out 10 other bags that you could purchase at Lowe's that are biodegradable. As far as the restrictions, as John was looking at with the 50 pounds and the five-foot bundles and the six-inch limb, a six-inch limb, five feet long, is now a log, in my opinion. It's no longer a branch. I would suggest that we cut it back, even though that the private sector would be willing to pick that up as well. When I mentioned the $48 per year, per billable, that could also be reduced to less if we decide to do it every other week, instead of doing it every week. So we could reduce the cost method there. We would have no capital outlay. You may start considering what happens in the event of a storm. The storms that we've had recently, Southport's experienced the same storms. Now, Southport is a lot smaller than us, but they were able to clean up Southport in three days. Judging by the size of the island, it would probably still take them three weeks to clean up our island. Looking at the contracts, if it, if it cost about $7,000 per pass to pick up our normal vegetation, we'd probably put that $7,000 aside in the event of a storm, and we would go into a different type of contract, where it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of $150 an hour for two men and a truck, for that three-week period to clean up all the vegetation. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Yes?
I, Mr. Foster, John, Chris, I would like to suggest that we amend the way that we are charging these stormwater fees. Right now, as Chris noted, we have approximately 8,500 utility bills. And in our utility bills, we pay our solid, wait, that's a stormwater, solid waste fees. We are not charging our vacant properties anything, nothing. They get this for free. I know this, because I have two vacant lots on the street behind me, and I haven't, but I could go to those two vacant lots and clear brush from those vacant lots on a monthly basis if I wanted to. But I'm not being charged for those two vacant lots. We're high volume on grass clippings and tree limbs. So I would like to suggest that the council consider, asking them to consider, let's do a way where let's roll our solid waste fund into the general fund. And the costs of this include in our, in the taxes, so that then I would be paying taxes for my vacant lots and taxes for my home for this service.
Good.
Now, some methods so that every parcel, every taxable parcel, is billed for this service, and we can't ask our billing department to add another billing type, and I don't think we can ask the county to put it on the tax bills like we did the sewer district fee. I mean, we have any number of vacant properties, and another example, a friend of mine lives on the street, a guy has many vacant properties here, many of them, and he comes down and regularly clears those and puts them in, puts the debris in the right-of-way, and she sent pictures. And he's not being charged a penny. And it was, that one picture you showed, it was more than even that amount of tree limbs and vegetation.
Can I add something? That's, that's one way to do it. There's a couple other issues that these guys didn't bring up, and those are, has everybody seen the channel now, 16-1?
16-10, I think.
John's, John's little thing you put together for, out here at the airport and the mountains of debris that are out there. I mean, there's mountains of this stuff. And nobody really wants the, at least we haven't found a big market for any of this stuff, actually. So we've got the issue of what we call tub grinding, and that's converting his debris into mulch, into a mulch product. This coming year is going up, we think, to $80,000 just to do the tub grinding. Then we got a second problem. We got to have a permit from the state to operate this thing. And if it gets out of compliance, they yank our permit, right, John? So the volume, it's still not, whatever we do, the volume is still going to be there. The beauty of what Chris has come up with is they take care of everything. They take care of the grinding, they don't put it on our property. It goes away. Is that correct, Chris?
Correct. It is transported off the island. They're not looking for...
They're not looking for any space at Airport Road. It would be taken away. We wouldn't have to, as Mr. Foster said, permits would not be involved, space at the airport facility would not be involved. The turning of the mulch would not be involved. There's a lot of labor that can definitely go away.
Can we bring that quote to the budget workshop? I think we probably could.
I could put a formal item together for you.
Also, John put a bit in on doing it this way as well too, but the only difference is you'd have your airport facility would be the difference.
That's correct.
But he could do it less. John says he could do it less than what this commercial firm, but we'd still be having to deal with tub grinding and the, and the waste at the airport, so.
But that less includes the tub grinding.
The what? Oh, it does include tub grinding. Okay, I'm sorry. It does include tub grinding.
And now, you know, it's a beautiful thing to say that you can only put it on the vacant lot if it's joining to your property, but we've never been able to enforce that. Have you come up with a magic method of enforcing that? Everybody puts their debris on vacant lots and you, they don't put their name tags on those trees and that grass.
To that point, Madam Mayor, if we do, do decide to go with the private sector, they are not willing to pick up empty lots unless we ask them to and that would be an extra charge. Code enforcement would have to be involved, just like when we started the brown and white codes and we asked the residents to deliver them to our Airport Road facility. More of the residents at that point got involved in their own neighborhoods policing who was putting out what where. We would be looking for that same type of cooperation with this.
A lot to think about.
Yeah. Identifying a child's Easy-Bake Oven across the street from a house that has a swing set and three remote-controlled trucks, it's, logic tells you where that Easy-Bake Oven came from in the right-of-way, but vegetative debris?
It's a hard one.
By and large, most of our code enforcement stuff is dumped on empty lots. I like your idea of getting the empty lots to pay because at least if we were still doing it, we would receive some revenue to pay for the certain, John's looking at, I think it's eight loads off of Southeast 20th Street. I can't find who did it. There's nobody there watching them.
And if I could add to that, it's not private residents doing all this either.
No.
We have commercial companies that are doing this as well. And that's probably the biggest violators right now.
And we're, we're giving free service to about 4,000 property owners because we have about town, island-wide. Do we do this in South Harbor? No, they can't put their vegetation out. Island-wide, we have about 12,500 to 13,000 parcels. And we only have about 8,500 utility customers. So all of us utility customers are paying for all this vegetative debris for the entire town. So just like with the other funds, roll this into the general fund. And so we can bill every property owner for this service.
Are you suggesting using what we're doing now?
Well, either way we do it, whether we keep it with our equipment and our employees and the way it's being done now, or whether we do it with the private company, the total cost is shared by all the property owners through our abhorrent taxes rather than the burden placed on only utility customers.
If we follow that method, it would probably drop it from 48 to about $36.
A year.
A year.
Yeah. Cost for a property owner.
Yes, ma'am.
There's another part of this too. If you had every week or every other week pickup, the chances of you dumping on another lot is reduced because you know it's going to get picked up. And you don't put it out every week. I mean, it's like every other week, once a month, whenever you put it out. But if you know it's not going to sit there for a month or a month and a half like we're doing it now, your chances are, well, just go ahead and put it here, they'll pick it up this week. But if you don't, the vacant lot next door, that's where it ends up on the roadway.
Private sector company you're talking about, do they use a vacuum truck to pick the leaves up with?
No, sir.
So the leaves would have to be bagged or in a container, right?
Yes, sir.
We would have to transition this in.
I'd really just as soon put my leaves in a bag as I had put them in a container and carry them to the street. I mean, I don't know where anybody would stumble over that.
Yeah.
And like you said, with the outside source, it's, it's every week we could do it for that cost.
If we...
Probably every other week would be, all would be necessary.
Reduce the cost then.
Would we have the option, would each one have the option, would it have to be all bagged or all poly carts? I mean, if Jim didn't want to use a poly cart, I could.
Individual residents will have the option because the resident themselves would have to purchase the poly cart.
But they would furnish the bags, right?
Excuse me?
They're going to furnish the bags, right?
No, you have to buy them at Lowe's.
Other town purchases the bags from Lowe's.
And the ones you get from Lowe's, a lot of them are paper.
They are paper, they are recycling bags and they hold quite a bit.
And they require bundling of the limbs?
Yes. Bundles would have to be five feet long, 50 pounds max and nothing greater than six inches in diameter. We would have to modify our ordinance in order to have it enforced.
If I have tree limbs that would fit in the poly cart, can I put those in the poly cart? Is that just, okay, all vegetative?
You'd like to put in your poly cart? You can't.
That question occurred when John was talking about they put them in a crush truck.
It's a garbage truck basically coming down your street and everything's getting compacted and taken off the island.
But one thing's for certain, there's going to have to be some change because I think with the volume that we're dealing with these days, we're either going to have to expand and spend more money. I don't really think anybody will spend more capital on these things. It's really, as John said, it's really, really expensive and it's not very efficient and it's just piling up like snow. It's just crazy, so.
Well, it's another one of those things that's unsustainable. I mean, sooner or later it gets so large that you just can't do it all in a month and you just get further and further behind. That's where we are right now.
And every, and every week we're adding new houses. And new houses generate, empty lots don't generate, well, to Mayor's point, some of them do.
Some of them do.
But the point is that once you build out a house there, then that's another customer that you put on at no extra expense. Somebody's picking the tab up for that, so.
So perhaps if you don't mind, if you could email that PowerPoint to the council members and then we could add, Mr. Foster, if you don't mind, we could add this as part of the budget workshop on the 28th. Any other council members have any questions for the budget workshop?
Well, just one extra thing. I mean, it's, when the leaves fall, I mean, suddenly we have a tremendous lot of leaves all over the island. I mean, just, we've just experienced that in the last few weeks. So what is the, I mean, is there a limitation to the number of bags?
What they're currently looking at, we haven't entered final negotiations of course, but what we're looking at is a 96-gallon cart, which is similar to the carts that you currently have, plus additional 10 bags.
Or 20 bags?
Or 20 bags.
Yeah.
Do you know what these carts look like?
Pretty much the same as our recycling carts.
What color are they?
Green.
fluorescent orange.
I think that blue color is just too, too bright.
We can make them tan.
I don't know.
Why don't you put together a proposal for this and bring it to our budget workshop and let's look at it.
Yes, sir.
Lots to think about, yeah.
It would be okay to direct John to put his together as well too for comparison.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Talking about this whole, this whole discussion.
We're not in agreement.
We are in agreement that we need to have an ordinance, but we differ on how we should go about it.
Then, yep.
Which is, which is a healthy thing to present all of your...
I was hoping maybe both of them could present their own proposal.
Yeah, let them both present, present both proposals to us at the workshop.
Okay. That works.
Y'all behave yourselves up there.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the new business item number four. Council Painter, I think you explained in full what account you would like council to consider.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would just like to make a motion that we give the authority to Todd Russler to propose the conditions that I mentioned earlier to Bald Head Island, the conditions under which we would withdraw our objection to their use of Jaybird Shoals as a borrow area for their terminal groin installation.
Have a motion. Do I have a second, please? Second by Council Medlin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please. And it is unanimous. With that, we will, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session and please state the general statute. And Mr. Eads, what is the pending litigation?
It's actually potential at this point.
Okay, potential, okay. So we will only make the motion for potential litigation and specific personnel.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
I move that we go into closed session to consult with the town attorney on potential litigation and specific personnel pursuant to NCGS 143-318 dot 11A, 3 and 6.
Have a motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Council Medlin. All those in favor, please? If all of you would excuse us.
You in there, Kyle?
Yeah, he just turned the mics back on.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Council took no action in closed session, but Mr. Eads, we did have to discuss some pending litigation, please.
Yes, ma'am. We need to add Johnson versus Town of Oak Island as well as, and forgive me Lisa, I have to get the names, but the lawsuit involving the panel that was previously on the right-of-way of the Sexton property. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting, Madam Mayor.
Council Kaiser, do I have a second? Second by Council Wyancop. All those in favor, please. Okay. Raise your hand.